Okay, call the meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen for December 8th, 2022 to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, there are five selectmen present, as well as Town Administrator Sullivan, as well as Town Moderator Smith, as well as Town Council, as well as Police Chiefs, as well as Mr. Foster, our treasurer.
Okay, thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. How about you, Rich?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you very much. Announcements, Alan?
Uh, let's see. The Onset Bay Association will have their parade, their Christmas type parade through the onset pier. Drive-through will be on December 13th instead of December 12th is originally planned. And then, of course, we have a town meeting at the VSW Pavilion on the 12th at 12:00 PM. Looks like the weather's gonna help a little bit. It's gonna be in the 50s. Hopefully, we won't have much rain and everybody come. I'm hoping we're able to get this done and Claire will run this through as quickly as possible with the pretty simple articles. And let's hope for the best and get out and be safe. That's it.
Hey, thank you. Patrick?
I have nothing to announce.
Okay, Jim?
I'm with Patrick.
Judy?
Okay, I have a couple of, well, I have a few announcements. There are currently all of the openings on the Bike Path Committee, which has just been reinvigorated. There are also openings on the Veterans Council, so please look on the town's website for more information. And I would urge people who are going to be applying for these positions to go to the meetings of the committee that you want to be joining before you actually put your application in. There's still time to register a child for the Imagination Library Program sponsored by the Friends of the Wareham Free Library. Any child from the age of birth to four and a half years old can participate for free. Each month, your child will receive an age-appropriate book. How do you register? Pick up a registration form at the Town Clerk's Office, Town Hall 54 Marion Road, at the Onset Bay Association at 196 Onset Avenue, or you can request a form for curbside service or during an appointment, visit to the main library. Call ahead to the main library, 295-2343, should be 508-295-2343. And now to food. Gleason Family YMCA at 33 Charge Pond Road is offering a free community market on December 11th, beginning at 11:00 AM. First come, first served. The market will continue until all food has been distributed. The last time they did this, the food was gone in an hour. You already did that one. Church of the Good Shepherd, High Street, has a drive-through meal every Thursday from 3:30 to 4:30. Wesley United Church, 462 Main Street, offers a 5:30 dinner every Wednesday. St. Patrick's Church on High Street through the St. Vincent de Paul Society has a food pantry from 3:00 to 7:00 on Wednesdays. Damien's Pantry is open from 9:00 to 11:30, Thursdays and Saturdays. Onset Four Square Church offers a soup kitchen Tuesday evenings at 4:30, right across from Lopes Field. The Council on Aging is offering boxed lunches on Tuesdays and Thursdays. You call the week before and pick up the meal from 9:00 to 9:30 in the morning. Also, his fuel assistance is available from the Council on Aging. The number there is 508-291-3131. Please remember that all of these programs require proper precautions of a face mask and social distancing. I would suggest that if you have an elderly neighbor or a family member, please encourage them to use the available services of the Council on Aging. Again, that number is 291-3131. And please, everyone, stay safe.
Okay, thank you. Just, you know, Alan did mention the town meeting. The governor rolled us back to the first part of Phase 3, took us out of Phase 3.2, put us back in Phase 3.1. And under that guidance, you're not supposed to have gatherings of 50 or more people. However, municipal and governmental meetings are exempt from that. So if more people than that show up, it doesn't make it, you know, violating the COVID guidelines or anything like that. So I just wanted to put that information out there. Is there anyone for citizens' comments tonight? If there is, please use the chat function to let me know, and I will call upon the TV people to unsilence you.
Cat?
Yeah. Cat's here from the onset basin. I guess if you're here. I thought you wanted to get on an agenda to give an update, but if you're, if you're just gonna give a brief update and want to do it during the comments, that's fine.
Oh, this is actually for something different. I would like to get on Selectmen's agenda.
That's fine, I'm confusing the two. No worries then. Then what's your other concern?
Sure. So the Onset Bay Center through the Buzzards Bay Coalition, you know, for the last several months, we've been able to provide some really great programs to the community. But what we are doing now is we've developed a community survey asking for people's feedback about programs that we host and programs that we could host. So we're really looking for families, adults, to provide some guidance to us about what they'd like to see at the onset bathhouse and what we can do to serve the community the best way possible. So we have this survey using a Google form available at our website at onsetbaycenter.org. And right on that landing page, there's a link for the community survey. You can also find it on the Onset Bay Center's Facebook page, which is Buzzards Bay Coalition's Onset Bay Center Facebook page. We would really appreciate any feedback. We're really thrilled to be welcomed into the community, and we're doing some really exciting things. But we want to make sure that we're representing the youth and families the best that we can. So I wanted to let the Board of Selectmen know that we are actively pursuing people's feedback and that I look forward to an opportunity to come and give a presentation about what we have been able to accomplish in this launch year of ours.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Does there any, I don't see anybody else waving their hand, so I guess we will move on to board comments. Alan?
Just one. Like to thank the Police Department for the toy drive on Saturday. It was a miserable morning, to say the least, wet and everything else. And I give credit to the Police Department standing out in the rain even with a pop-up tent and getting soaked to pick up all the toys for the kids. Thank you very much.
Okey-dokey. Patrick?
I'm good.
Jim?
I'll pass on this.
Okay, thank you. Judy?
I don't have any. I just want to correct what you said about the rollback. It's effective Sunday night, not Saturday night, from the governor.
Well. Fair enough. But the public meetings are exempt anyway, so it's a moot point. I don't have any comments. Appointments, reappointments or interviews, we don't have any, which brings us down to hopefully the last of the liquor permits?
May I suggest that we take Mr. Foster out of order? Which would be, yes, which would be nine.
Nine E, yeah.
Nine E.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so if we could have Jim Jabertie and Mr. Foster unmasked. Okay. One?
Had to figure out how to do it.
Well, you beat John, so you're doing a good job. There he is.
Hey, John. How you doing?
Okay, so dealy-blyly, we gathered here why?
We went out to bid on $1.65 million worth of bonds for the equalization basin. We had standing on pores, review our bond rating a couple of weeks back. They reaffirmed our AA+ bond rating. And so we went out to bid. We received four bids, very good bids. The true interest cost on the lowest bidder was from Fidelity Capital Markets, .533027 for a 10-year bond. So just over half a percent.
Nice. Can we take more than one?
No, I actually asked if we had anything that was callable that we could refinance. Unfortunately, we didn't, because that's basically the lowest interest rate we've had for a long-term bond since I've been here.
That's pretty nice.
Yep.
That's our Christmas present.
Christmas present to the Sewer Department.
Okay, and?
We also have, we need to have a vote from the Board of Selectmen to issue those.
I think there's a specific motion too, right?
And I have it in front of me.
Yeah. Just briefly, if Mr. Jabertie could explain what this money is for?
It's for the equalization basins to provide us relief in the event of heavy rainstorms, overflow, when the plant just can't handle the input that's coming in.
Yep.
You can't expel it fast enough.
I just didn't want the public thinking we were saying, oh, 1.665 million, they want it, I guess we'll give it to them. I wanted an explanation out there for people. Anything else? Any inquiries about this before we ask Judy to make the specific motion?
I just gotta point out, I just, can I, I just gotta, this is kind of stupid, but I gotta point it out anyway. Down the bottom of the screen, I've never seen this before. It's everybody's words are going across the bottom. Anybody notice that? Well, Judy, when you said, you know, the vote for the thing, it said boat. So terrific. So you're gonna give us the boat now?
Well, I guess the tank is kind of a vessel, so maybe we're not too far off.
I guess not, yeah. Let's do the boat.
Yeah, do the boat, Judy.
Okay. I move that the sale of $1,380,000 general obligation wastewater bonds of 2020 of the town dated December 17th, 2020, the bonds, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of $1,697,331.30 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on October 1st of the year and in the principal amounts and bare interest at the respective rates as follows. The year 2021, $140,000, interest rate 5. 2022, 140,005%. 2023, 140,005%. 2024, 140,005%. 2025, 140,005%. 2026, 140,005%. 2027, 135,005%. 2028, 135,005%. 2029, 135,005%. And 2030, 135,5%.
Isn't that .5%?
No, that's actually what, what these bids came in at. That was a true interest cost?
Yes.
So what you see is we're paying back $1,380,000, but they're giving us $1,007,000. So they gave us a $320,000 bond premium upfront. So we're getting the $1,006,500 plus the cost to issue the bond, and they're breaking it out over all those years. We're actually paying back 1.38 in interest.
Okay.
Basically getting it upfront.
I'm not done with my motion.
Sorry.
Further move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated November 19th, 2020, and a final official statement dated December 17th, 2020, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. I further move that the Town Treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such form as may be approved by Bond Council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. I further move that we authorize and direct the Town Treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance proceedings and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the Town Treasurer and Bond Council deem sufficient, or such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws. I further move that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk and the Town Treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. And that's the end of my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500.
The only person who has to sign that is me, as the clerk of the Board of Selectmen, and I will have that document available to Mr. Foster first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
All set, John? All set, Jim?
All set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Have a good night, folks.
Thank you.
Okey-dokey.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. Listen, have them hang around. Okay, we'll jump back to licenses and permits. Is this the end of them?
There may be one or two, but yes, basically, it's the end.
Just, just because, you know, we've got next week.
Right.
And I'm thinking of meeting, of not meeting on both the 22nd and the 29th. We've gone pretty hard. And unless something urgent that pops up, I don't think we necessarily need to meet. We'll have town meeting over with and everything else, so. Tell them they gotta, if they're, if they're still pending, tell them they gotta get them in by the 15th.
I don't believe there are. There may be some change of hours requests, but those can be dealt with differently.
Yep. And until those are approved, they can always, you know, if they, if they close early or something like that for a few days, they can always just notify the police. Okay.
Okay. I move the renewal of the following year-round common victualers all alcoholic beverage licenses for the year 2021 under the provisions of Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws. Number one, 99 West LLC, DBA 99 Restaurant and Pub, 40 Rosebrook Place, East Wareham. Number two, Barnacle Bill's Seafood LLC, DBA Barnacle Bill's Seafood, 3126 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham. Number three, Bay Point Club LLC, DBA Bay Point Club, 19 Bay Point Drive, Onset. Number four, El Tulense, Inc., DBA El Mariachi Restaurant, 207 Main Street, Wareham. Number five, Lindsay's, Inc., DBA Lindsay's Family Restaurant, 3138 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham. Number six, Rare Hospitality International, Inc., DBA Longhorn Steakhouse, 2421 Cranberry Highway, Wareham. Number seven, Saga Steakhouse, Inc., DBA Saga Steakhouse, 20 Rosebrook Way, Wareham. And number eight, Stevie B's, Inc., DBA Onset Sports Resort, 270 Onset Avenue, Onset.
Here's the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes, I wanna, I would like some clarification on something.
Go ahead.
Well. We, we're basically, we're approving one license, but I see two in the packet. One for common victular, all alcoholic or all alcohol, and one for a common victular. One spelt with two L's, one with one L. Why do we, why do we give restaurant two licenses when I would think that the common vic with the all alcohol, if they're serving it, would cover it? Just a point of information. I'm looking at it, I'm saying, how come? I kind of looked it up online, and I'm, I'm just curious.
Well, let's finish the vote, and then maybe Rich can speak to that point.
All right, good.
Okay, so we've got you for a yes. Let's, Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Those are approved. Now, before the next one, maybe Town Council could jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with your permission to Selectmen's. You've got, there are two different types of licenses under two different statutes. The liquor license, also referred to as an all-alcoholic or beer and wine in some cases, common victual license, is under Chapter 138, Section 12. And that just refers to a liquor license that's available only to places that serve food, say as distinct from a tavern license, which I don't think we have any, where no food can be served and windows have to be blocked off so the public can't see the, the bad goings on inside. The other type of license, the straight common victual license, is a license under Chapter 140. I want to say Section 5, but it's 5 or 6, I guess, under Chapter 140. And that is strictly a license to serve food. In order to have a Chapter 138, Section 12, common victual license, as a predicate, you have to have the Chapter 140 common victual license. So that's the difference.
The ones for food and alcoholic beverages, correct?
Well. Not, not quite. In order to, it's a description of a type of license under Chapter 138, common victuals alcoholic license or alcohol license, pardon me. That's just its title. In order to be qualified to get that license, you also have to have a Chapter 140 common victual license. The liquor license does not authorize the service of food, although you can't get that kind of liquor license unless you have the Chapter 140 common victual license.
All right, 138. All right, we'll, we'll chat later. I appreciate it, though. I just, you know, I'm saying, well, how come? I looked it up online and, but thank you.
It's the state making more work for us, Jim.
What?
It's the state making more work for us.
Well, one of them we sign, one of them we don't, and.
Yeah, Town Administrator signs the common.
Yeah. So license. Go ahead.
Okay, Judy, you want to go down to the?
I, I move the renewal of the following year-round common victual wines and malt beverage license for the year 2021 under provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Sika, Inc., DBA Minerva Pizzeria and Slice House, 257 Main Street, Wareham.
You have a motion?
Second.
Yes, second. Motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
I move the renewal of the following year-round Veterans Club All Alcoholic Beverage License for the year 2021 under the provisions of Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws. American Legion, Inc., DBA American Legion Post, 220, 777, Main Street, Wareham.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500.
I move the renewal of the following year-round Club All Alcoholic Beverages License for the year 2021 under the provisions of Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws. Benevolent Protective Order of Elks, Wareham, New Bedford Lodge 73, Inc., DBA BPOE, Wareham, New Bedford Lodge 73, Inc., 2855 Cranberry Highway, Wareham.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call, vote. Alan?
As a member of the Elks, I abstain.
Abstention. Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The vote is 401 with Alan abstaining, and that takes care of licensing. Town business. Should we just jump down to the Police Building Study Committee and go with that now so we don't keep people waiting around?
Sure.
Okay, then let's have Chief Wallcheck and the Town Moderator jump into our discussion here. Good evening.
Good evening. The Public Safety Complex Study Committee began meeting back again early summer. And initially, what we were looking at, we had heard that the fire district was looking at building a new fire station on Route 28, and then that was put aside. But we wanted to at least have a full discussion with them because it would make a difference as to what kind of properties we might be looking at if we were to move forward with some sort of a complex, a campus-style complex that would be separate but on the same lot. So we did meet with them and talk to them. We had some interesting conversations that they would have perhaps, perhaps, an interest if there was a lot available that would be centrally located because, of course, their response time has to be a certain number of minutes. Whereas when you have a police station, you don't have that limitation, but you do also have a limitation with EMS. So we had a couple of things that came into play. So we wanted to have that kind of conversation first to see what we were actually looking at. When we thought about the Deacon's School and reached out to the Wareham Fire District, they expressed that that might be an interesting concept for them because it would be centrally located, we'd have enough room. So we had a discussion, and if they were to move forward with something, that would probably be where we would have to cite something in order to fit their ability to have a response time. However, it would not be a good response time for EMS. EMS would probably still have to have a satellite stationed somewhere on the other side of town so that they could meet their response time. So there's a lot of things that have come into play. Naturally, the very first site we looked at was the property on Minnet Avenue, which was identified, let's say, 15 years ago as being a very good site because the town does own it, and it would mean not having to buy property. So there was a lot of discussion going on initially at the early part of the summer. And then I came before you to ask how you felt about the Deacon's property or, or the Minnet Ave property because we had heard that perhaps the Sewer Department was interested in Minnet Ave and that there was a study being done for the Deacon's property. So it just left us with, well, okay, if they, if they're not available, then we have to start looking at something else. So we began to look at other properties that would have enough acreage to fit whatever we decided to move forward with, whether it was to work with the fire department or whether to do just something solely for the Police Department. So we have identified, and I think we have an obligation to identify any places that, that might work. We looked at probably a list of 20, 20 different sites and properties that would have enough acreage. We're getting close to being able to put together an RFP. And so although we can move forward with the RFP to do the spatial needs study, we're gonna have to come up with and identify, you know, once the engineer decides on what size building that we need, of what, what size property we're gonna need. So I think it's important at this point that we need to know from you, you know, what the plans are for either the Minnet Ave or the Deacon's site. Because if those aren't available to us, we don't want to be spinning our wheels, and we might want to look at something different. So we did look at a couple of properties a couple of weeks ago. Both of them were very interesting. They had possibilities. But again, you know, we don't want to rule out Minnet Ave. We don't want to rule out Deacon's. But on the other hand, if we have to rule them out, then we need to look for something else. And as you know, responses from Police Department and EMS are different. EMS has a certain time limit, whereas with your Police Department, the cruises are out in different sections of the town. So they're not really tied to any specific time limit. But if we do a combination with EMS, then we are limited to a central location so that EMS has their time limit that they can respond in. So, you know, I, I know that, you know, I had been before you before, but I think we need to get some input from you, a little, little more than what we got the last time as to what the town might have planned and let us know are either the Minnet Ave or the Deacon's site be available. And so that's why we're here tonight. Um, and so that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you, uh. Well, I'd actually put this on as Patrick's update and then and then uh, you know, we figured it made sense to have you and the chief here as well. But Patrick, uh, what's.
All right, so I asked them to have it put on because um the sites need to be decided. They, you know, we can't keep going around and around, we need to get an RFP, we need to get the process going. And we need to uh, you know, build this thing sooner than later, uh, you know. Uh, every time, there's always something that comes up when these things drag out too long. And uh causes a problem, especially the police station's actually been one of those things. Every time we've gone through this process, something's come up and it's never happened. And I'd like to see it go forward. Now, as far as the the Minet site was concerned, uh, one of everybody was worried about was whether there was going to be sewer up there or not. Or so on, so forth. Well, I talked to Jim Joe Birdy today, and by the way, he's here if we want to have him on. We um, we talked about uh, you know, the fact that if they use the five acres that they possibly could use. One of the things that was discussed at our meeting, uh, the meeting with you guys, with uh the committee. Was that they were talking about having an open ditch and basically just putting the water in over the top and letting it seep into the ground. Well, that's a terrible way to do it, that would ruin the entire piece of property. And of course, the other way is to put it subsurface like they did in Born. And uh, it doesn't have any odor at all because it's completely covered and it doesn't have an odor issue at all. It wouldn't affect one bit the other twenty one acres, which the police department would be on. But that being said, they're actually looking at something else entirely different. Where they're going to be trying to push a pipe, which would go a lot shorter distance all the way to the canal. In order to have an outflow pipe, which will be the actual elimination of their problems. And uh, I guess that's still moving on and going forward. And I think that that's probably a more viable solution. Uh, if we did a subsurface disposal system, we're talking fifteen years max at a at a considerable cost. And it's a total Band-Aid. So I wouldn't want to see them eliminate the possibility of putting a police station on that property. Because of something that might Band-Aid the sewer system for a very short amount of time. Uh, it just doesn't make sense. It's it is, they've got to figure out something else. They should, I think they should go forward with the pipe, they're working on that now, they're they're trying to come up with. Uh, I guess they've been able to figure out how to get it sort of halfway there and they're trying to figure out how to get it the rest of the way there. But I think that it's a damn good site for the police station, I think we ought to allow the police to use it, I think we should vote to do so. Um, and that's one of the reasons why I put it on here, because at least they have one site, we own it. I'm not saying that that's where it'll end up, I hope that's where it'll end up because I think it's cheap, it isn't going to cost us any money. To put the anything up there we want, because we already own the property. We have to buy a piece of property, if the police department costs us nine million to build. And uh, it costs us three million to buy another piece, well, now you've got six million. You know, you know what I'm saying, it's gonna, it's just uh, you know, it's a lot less money to uh to do. Um, secondly, the Deacon's property, I think um, I think the Deacon's property is a valuable piece of property. Um, and not that the police aren't valuable, don't get me wrong, but for one, it is in a neighborhood, so so to speak. Uh, but it's, I think it's, to use it as a police station isn't really a good thing, that's my opinion. Now, I'm just speaking to the members of the board because they have to make this decision. And I think at this point, we ought to just uh, I I would, I would be in favor of ruling that out. Uh, and that way they could move on from that site. And now they have a couple others, don't get me wrong, there's a couple others that are hanging out there still, there's one on Charge Pond. Uh, which would require a little bit of work because they'd have to negotiate with the gas company for an exit and a bunch of other things, but whatever. Um, but these other two properties, we ought to just uh, you know, stop the the stuff. Get off the 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 uh, and give them something to work with so that they can move forward in one direction or another. Uh, because they they really got to put together an RFP, which, you know, is a big, long list of a whole lot of stuff that's going to happen. I I understand the police are working on that now, they're already, they're already working on what their needs are, it's basically a needs list. So you can fit it into, and I think that's a good thing, and I think it needs to go forward as quick as possible. And I think we ought to uh deal with these properties so that they can decide and start to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chief Wallcheck. Your thoughts?
I'm, I'm, as Mrs. Smith said, I'm happy wherever it goes because at the end of the day, our people are in the field. And generally out there, uh, the only concern I would have again is because we're sharing the facility with EMS. I think response time for them is is crucial, I agree with Mrs. Smith on that. And uh, but other than that, I I'm pretty confident wherever we pick will be the right one. And I I think Minet Ave is not a bad spot at all.
Okay, thank you, uh. Well, well, let's let's uh, have questions or discussion, Alan.
I was, I did a lot of work with the uh Wareham Fire and Water District originally with their. Their location with the station, they actually laid it out with a across from Rosebrook, you actually a piece there. Which had one end of the property with the fire station, the other end with the police station way back then, but it didn't come to fruition though. Uh, because of the chemical plant, they had to build for the water purification, they backed out of that whole project. The, my understanding is, if I'm wrong, let me know that the fire department is not interested in locating on Minet Ave. Due to due to being too close to Hudson, too far from their other area, because they do want to close the West Wareham Station. Uh, the place that ran across the YMCA. Uh, I think, again, I'm speaking out of turn probably, but there might be a possibility with AD make peace of basically trading land. From, you know, basically on Route twenty eight there, Cranberry Highway with the existing police station. And possibly locating there in the fire station, EMS would all be located there, it would work out pretty well. They're clearing land anyways for solar fields, they seem to have uh come out and talked to this study group about. Working out something where they would do roads and other things, because they have to anyways for the solar field. So my inclination as far as what's best overall for the town, would obviously be the mine, excuse me, would be the Charge Pond Road. Because would give us the opportunity to centralize a dispatch as well, which is a savings for the town all the way around where. All the response groups would have one dispatcher at the whole town, so that's my feeling as of right now.
Okay, uh. Well, we know what you, you know what you think, Patrick, uh, Jim. Well, actually, we don't, uh, Patrick, if you want to say something about, you know, the Charge Pond roadside or the other site.
Yeah, they, uh, well, for one, there's a cost to the Charge Pond roadside, obviously, and uh even if it's a. A land swap, there's a, there's a cost. But uh, the other issue is that we have to negotiate with the gas company. Because they have to have a second exit, it would have to come out on twenty eight and we'd need the gas company to give us that exit. And um, you know, if they're anything like the train people are, and we've tried to negotiate with them many times, we didn't get too far. Uh, you know, uh, these, these, these utilities tend to be very difficult, but who knows, it could happen. But then again, it could, so, and I'm not saying to eliminate that piece, it's still one that's in the mix. But I think we should give them, uh, give them the uh Minet site and say, okay, yep, go ahead, you can use that. And then uh, you know, tell them that, okay, I don't believe the Deacon's site is a good spot. And then let them go off and then let it, let let it, you know, because. Once they figure out what the building's going to look like, what it requires for everything, maybe they say, well, you know what, it doesn't fit there, it fits here better or whatever, you know. We don't know, but you won't know till you do the whole thing, but we need to give them something to go with and I say, let's give it to them.
Okay, uh, so I guess what, I mean, we could vote tonight to narrow it to two spots, we could certainly do that or vote to eliminate Deacon's, I mean. You know, whatever, whatever is going to benefit, whatever is going to benefit the uh, the the committee and its uh work here.
Well, I I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion that we allow.
I I'll hold on.
Let everybody else talk first, go ahead.
Yeah, exactly, I got to get to Jim and then.
I forgot Jim didn't get a chance to weigh in and neither did Judy.
Yeah, so, exactly, Jim.
On the Minet, on the Minet site. Um, where would you be coming out, would you be coming out on a Minet or Great Neck Road? Um, it's a pretty, pretty interesting intersection there where Hudson Ave, Minet and Great Neck come together. So I.
Go ahead.
No, I just, uh, you know, I need that for clarification, it it comes out in the neighborhood also. Um, unless I'm I'm missing something.
Right, in the last study that, um, when we looked at that site, there is uh. An exit that would come out onto Great Neck Road and as well as the entrance and exit on Minet Ave. So there would be two ways to go in and out. Um. You know, those are the kinds of things that we have to weigh. Um, when we look at a site and we'll discuss, you know, and weigh the benefits or or the non-benefits.
Right.
But you know, um. If you had to have a second exit, there is a second exit on that that piece of property.
Okay, um. And Char- and Charge Pond Road is interesting, now do we own the land across from the Y there? Uh, what's the, what's the story on that? And I thought also, um. Talking with, um, I thought it was the town administrator, I want to put words in his mouth about a blast radius. From the uh, gas company pipeline there, is that anything to be concerned about or no?
I think that's something, uh, Mr. Benice, that we would have to thoroughly investigate. But in talking with um, one of our members on the committee, he didn't feel that that's an issue. The land across from the Y, my understanding is that there is an agreement that the Y has right of first refusal on some of that property. So again, these are all the things that when we're discussing, we have to weigh. Um, you know, before we make a determination as to which possible work, those are all the things that are fully discussed.
Right, and um. It's just right on twenty eight there, or almost on twenty eight and um. I I think less intrusive on the neighborhood, or there are people that live there though. Um, and we're talking about a campus style or including EMS. Um, one concern that I've 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 noticed is with the EMS is we have a very high rate of turnover. They come in, they work for a while, then they'll they'll transfer to a fire department. So I I don't know, you know, what other people's vision is, but I I think um. You know, looking in the longer term, that it may be a transition on EMS. So um, maybe, maybe not, but that's just my perspective. Where they may be more appropriately uh joined with the fire districts within the town or district within the town. Um, in order to. Stop a rampant pace of turnover and training that we do, I think we're appointing um, three tonight. We did a couple of few weeks ago. So just, you know, thinking forward, you know, where are they going to be in in five or ten years? And um, what's the facility we're going to build, going to encompass? So um, I like the idea of of Charge Pond Road because it's location. Um, Minet. Well, I, again, it comes out in a deep, kind of deeper into a neighborhood and the intersection with the three roads. It's kind of hairy there and Deacon's, I I'd like to see some different things done with it and um. Because the building's there, maybe it could be used for it being community center or. Uh, council on aging and and, you know, elderly center. And you know, there's a lot of space there, the building probably has another twenty years in it, thirty years. So um, that's my thought, so, I don't know, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Judy.
Yes, I think um, from my perspective, the Deacon's property is the least attractive of them. Um, and I say that based on the conversations and the homework that we've done on the Deacon's property through the WRA. Um, it is a very interesting piece of property, it has several different possibilities available to it. But I really think that um, a public service. Uh, location there would have awful traffic problems. And I I think that we actually could get rid of that um, in terms of an opportunity for the. The police fire complex, whatever we want to call it.
Okay, thank you, uh. You know, I I think what's kind of hung this up over the years is uh. You know, this desire to try to get to the perfect solution and 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 I, you know, I applaud people who reach for the stars. But I think part of the problem is, is when you make it more complicated, uh, the more entities you get involved in it. Uh, you talk about land that, you know, you're going to have to get uh access from somebody else's land, possibly. Uh, that doesn't typically like to give up access. You know, I I'm concerned that Deacon's uh, just isn't the right place for it, I I don't think anybody here really supports that. Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, jump in, uh, as far as uh Charge Pond goes. I think it should stay on the table, I do think it's problematic in that now you have to negotiate with somebody to get the land. Now you got to negotiate with a second somebody to get rights across their land to get this second exit out to the highway. So it, you know, complicated, I think, is the enemy of getting this done, but. You know, I know there are people interested in it, so I I could see keeping that and Minet as the two preferential sites at this point in time.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, I'll tell you, I'd like to make a motion that we. We uh allow the uh committee to go forward with the Minet site. And that they are allowed to go forward uh and investigate the Charge Pond site. Um, uh, as part of their, 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 their tenure to to kind of work this out. Because I, look, if we don't narrow it down quickly here, what's going to happen is this thing is going to just drag out and who knows how long it's going to take. And I I'd like to see this sooner than later, I'd like to see it before I'm dead anyway.
So wouldn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, you for sure, this is a three time for you. That's my motion, I'd like to uh, put that out there on the table and see what happens.
I'll second it, but I'd like to speak to my second.
Sure.
Okay, speak to your second and then I'll go around.
Um, I would prefer to eliminate Deacon's. The way that you've made your motion, it limits them to two properties, and my understanding is that there are other properties that. May not have been mentioned this evening. I can think of at least one town owned property that that is um available. And I haven't been in on any of the information gathering, obviously. Um, but I think it's a better way of doing it, Mr. Tropiano, would be to uh, get one of them off the table.
Well, uh, we talked about some of the other sites, we talked about the other day, the old, the one the fire department wanted to use across from. From uh, Rosebrook there and so on, and that nobody really had a real interest in that, it has a big drop off in the back and there was a whole bunch of things. So I think uh, just at the committee meeting level, we just kind of, kind of poo-pooed that one. Um, and uh, you know, to be honest with you, I think that when, in the conversation the other day, and tell me if I'm wrong. Uh, Claire and guys, the conversation was that the viable sites were, in fact, the two sites we're talking about. They were really the ones that uh, everybody seemed to be like, okay, that that can be viable if we can have it. That can be viable, maybe if we can get all the deal together. I think that's really uh, where everybody was coming from at the meeting that that I attended the uh, what was a couple days ago, whatever it was. I I think that's the the intention that I seem to get from everybody. The only other one was somebody mentioned the property to the left of the police station, if you're facing the building where all those buildings are. But they want three million dollars for that property and, you know, we're not going to spend three million dollars for a property, it's just not going to happen.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Tropiano, I I would not rule out. And like to eliminate the Cranberry Highway property because we've had some further discussions since that meeting. Um, with um, an engineering company. Who felt that putting a police station on there wouldn't be a big issue. Um, even though there's a drop off, if you look at the current police station and the way that's set up. Uh, their lower level drops off too, um, you know, so that you could design a building that would fit that. Um, yes, it would be some complications to uh, having to bring in Phil, but. Every single site that you have is going to have an issue that has to be addressed, so I wouldn't necessarily say that we've eliminated that. Uh, the location is a good location, it's very visible. Um, and again, we might be able to work a deal with the owner for a transfer property um, next door. Um, so I I'd like to keep that on the table, I think, until our next meeting and. Bring up some things that we have discovered since our last meeting.
Well, it's fine, I I'm not trying to rule that out, I I am trying to rule out Deacon's because I think it's a bad spot, I am trying to rule it out. I am trying to make sure that you have access to Minet. That it's, it's a done deal that you can go ahead and say, okay, we can go forward with Minet, those are the two things I'm trying to do today. Those are the two things I'm trying to do today. Uh, as far as if you want to have three other sites that you want to look at, it's okay with me. But I wanted you to have that so you could say, okay, we have this no matter what. And we're not doing this because, you know, it's time to start getting down, whittling this thing down. Um, you know, what I think of the site there is, uh, you know, doesn't really matter right now. It'll matter at the committee meeting. We'll talk about it. The one on 28, I have a whole lot of other issues about that one, but we'll talk about it and I don't mind having it in the mix. So I would like to see them. So maybe my motion should be, and I'll change it, that we should allow them to use the mine it site. And, and eliminate the Deacon's site. And, uh, they can add whatever sites they have as well.
I withdraw my second.
I think you just made a mistake. You already did. Uh, is that your motion?
Yes, I withdrew it and I made a new one.
Okay.
And I withdraw my second.
So you're going to make another second?
Yes, second.
Okay.
What is your motion?
So we're going to, we're going to give them mine it. They're going to have, uh, they're going to be able to go forward with their other sites as well, and we're going to eliminate Deacon's. So they'll be able to use mine it and they'll eliminate Deacon's. That's basically what we're doing. Every other site that they have, they can also keep involved. If you get my drift.
Okay, Alan.
I think as far as the committee goes, it's going to be pretty simple, uh, decision. The first thing they need to do is decide whether they want to have a complex, which is police EMS and the fire department or not, because if it's not going to have the fire department piece in it, then it's basically going to have to be most likely mine it. Or it could be one of 28 and Cranberry Highway. If they want to do everything in one place with a central dispatch, then your choice really is Charge Pond Road, uh, which I know AD Makepeace has had discussions, you know, have shown real interest in making that available as well. So it's really a matter of what you want, which way you want to go.
I think you're right. I, I think he's absolutely. I think you're absolutely right. And it is going to matter what out, what the ultimate list of things that cut, get together in the RFP and all that is going to make a difference. But all I'm saying is let's give them mine it and say, okay, it's yours. Do it. And let's eliminate Deacon's so they can just, uh, put that one aside. That's all.
I agree.
Yeah, at some point, um, you know, we're going to want to make this into a shovel ready project sooner rather than later.
Correct.
Different admission. We've got a different administration coming in in Washington. And I would imagine that there's going to be some, some emphasis, uh, just like there was in 2008, uh, on shovel ready jobs. And some, hopefully some money made available. Would, you know, it'd be nice if we could tap into that. Uh, in addition to the 911 grants that are available as well. So I, I think it behooves us to, to kind of get rolling on this. You know, the question here too is, uh, you know, it, it makes it difficult if, if the minus site, uh, works for EMS but not the fire district. But if you flip it around, if the other site doesn't work for EMS, I, I think we have to be, you know, it, it's great to try to involve everybody in it. But I think we have to take care of our own departments first and foremost. That's, that's my own personal opinion on this. So.
You know, one other thing that's, uh, interesting is, you know, the, uh, they, they, it's the present chief has no interest right now in moving out of the building and keeping it or whatever. And at some point he's going to move along. Their ideas might change, the things that they do might change. You know, if we build a campus thing and on one of the sites or the others, who knows, maybe they'll say all of a sudden, you know, that works for us, we'll move there. You know what I'm saying? Sometimes you build it and they'll come. So, you know, we don't know how that'll all work out. Things change all the time, don't they?
Yep.
I would prefer to see you make a motion to eliminate Deacon's. I would, I would be happy to second that one. But I don't want to tie two properties up in the same, uh, motion.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm making it so that they have access, that they have the right to use mine it, period. And it's going to be their site to use. That's basically what I'm doing. That's a, that's a must do because otherwise that site's not going to work. You know, you gotta, you go, we gotta say to them, okay, yes, you can use it. That's what they've been asking us to do all summer.
Okay, well, just for, your motion called for what?
My, my motion calls, well, you can go back and look, but I, my motion calls for giving them access to mine it and to eliminate Deacon's. All the rest of the stuff is still on the table as far as whatever else they're doing.
Okay, that's, that's what I heard your motion as. Judy, does that satisfy your concern?
No, it does not.
Because we're eliminating, we're eliminating Deacon's.
Right, but that's, I, I would prefer only to remove Deacon's.
Well, that's not my motion, so.
That's me a question. I will not second that motion.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll second the motion because I think, you know, if they, if we're doing a police station only, and this is what this group decides, then mine it is viable. But right now, because of the possibility, the water pollution control facility still may be looking at such a question that, you know, we can't do anything. We're going to sit and get nothing done because
Correct.
You know, at the State House, there's a couple, you know, bills pending. Uh, and if we're not ready, we're not going to get it. And the other pieces, I know for a fact that probably late February, early March is going to be a infrastructure built from the federal government with the new regime. And if we're not ready, we're going to lose out. And the idea of getting a facility built for virtually no cost to us at all, uh, is something that we don't want to miss. You had that when we originally did the sort way back in the seventies. You know, we had the greatest deal in the world. It was virtually all paid for by other people. Uh, I hate to see us miss this opportunity. The police station is badly needed. So, uh, for me, I always try and, you know, regionalize whenever I can. That's why I keep pushing into the central dispatch. But at the end of the day, what I need to see happen is that police station get resolved. I'd even be happy, uh, throw a real monkey wrench in the whole thing. If we were to take the existing land for the police station, put temporary buildings up, knock the old one down and build a proper, it should have been done back in the seventies. But we need to do something and do it soon.
You know what? Can I speak?
Yes, yes.
Of course.
Yeah, we're, we're bouncing all around here. We're talking about a campus. We're talking about policing EMS. We're talking about police. We're just, if we're just doing a police, uh, an enlargement of the police building, I'd have to agree with what, uh, Selectman Slavin said. There's, there's quite a bit of land to the right of the, um, the fence there. They could put on a, a huge two-story addition, slide into that. They could, we could redo the building they're in if we're just talking for the police. Um, the location, as far as I'm concerned, is great. The chief would have to tell me because he's the one that works, has worked out of there for 40 years, the, the pros and cons to it. And, and actually, he really needs to be the one to let us know what, what works best for them as far as emergency response and everything, because I'm just doing it from my perspective. I'm, I'm, you know, and I have a different perspective than I'm sure he does because that is his job.
If I could address Mr. Munez, um, and Mr. Slavin, um, the very first study that we did way back, um, that site was looked at. And back then, we had the availability, um, that the owners of the property next door were willing to give the land to the town, um, which therefore gave us enough space to do something on that site. That side is constrained by, uh, Patterson Brook behind it. So I'm not sure, um, without going back and doing a detailed engineering study of that, whether that would have enough room on that site. It didn't back when we did it 25 years ago, only because we had the extra land that would have been donated by Mrs. Bourne. So again, you know, it's easy to say that's what you would like to do is to add on to that building and add another story. And the question becomes, can you add on to that building? Um, there are other issues that come up. Um, there used to be, um, in the cellar, they used to do training. Um, there might be some contamination. Mr. Walter, uh, Chief Walchek could address it, but, and I'm not sure that that's as viable as what you think. I think, you know, doing that would take a lot of time to further study. And we want to get this RFP done in the next couple of weeks. And I think the benefit of having done a study not too long ago, the spatial needs study that was done then is a good stepping off point. You, you've got some good information there and it's not going to take long um, to do the feasibility study because we already have a lot of information that's available that we can work from.
And how much land do you need just for a police station?
Um, well, just for a police station, you're probably looking at about six acres, but if you do, uh, EMS, you're probably up to about eight acres, I would think. And Chief Walchek might want to weigh in on that, but I believe about eight acres.
Yeah, we'd need about eight acres and, and, you know, with EMS, I'd, I'd be looking at without, you know, talking to David, but I'd say we're going to need at least four bays for them. Um, and their equipment. So, and this police station, one of the other major issues for us is the power coming into the building.
Okay. Yeah.
The ever source had, we've talked to ever source before about getting more power into the building and it's been a problem.
Yeah, some issues with power up there for sure.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, just so everyone understands, my comment is based on the idea of taking this existing police station and basically raising it and building something completely new. I don't believe that building as constructed back in the seventies was designed for a second floor or anything else. And it was done for unfortunately, for the lowest cost they could get away with at the time.
That's true.
And we're paying for it now. I don't believe it's useful in any way, shape or form, like the way it is right now.
You weren't listening, but to what I, what I had stated, but that's okay. I mean, if it's not a feasible site, it's not a feasible site. I'm looking to narrow it down and I want the input from the people who are the users and what would work and what wouldn't work for them. And, um, uh, I, I agree with, um, Selectman Whiteside, let's get Deacon's off the table. And, um, mine it, I have some, some questions on because you're coming out into neighborhoods on two, two roads. And you have to travel quite a distance before you hit the main road, which I see is 28 into a six to go north or east or west. And then you have the highway. But, um, you know, I'm one vote here. Uh, thank you.
Well, we have a motion, uh, by Patrick to eliminate Deacon's, uh, and to allow them to go on to the mine it site and look around. I don't see that that precludes them looking at any other site in town.
No, it doesn't. It's just allowing them to use that site and to eliminate the Deacon's site. That's all it's doing.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Hmm. Now, I'm not really in favor of that site, but I'll go along with it.
Okay, so that's a yes. Uh, Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
No, because I'm opposed. I want only Deacon's removed.
Okay, understood. Uh, myself, yes, so passes 410. So, uh, with that in mind, uh, I don't know if that, how much that helps you, uh, begin the RFP planning process, but it's something.
I think it helps a lot.
It helps a lot because now we, uh, like I said, doing the spatial studies first and foremost, they'll determine what size building and from there we'll have to figure out where it will fit.
Okay.
Thank you, Claire. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you very much for all your support. I really mean that. So thank you for that. We appreciate it.
We're going to build this before I die, okay?
And me too.
Well, I hope you live another 50 years plus.
Yeah, well. I hope it's way before that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, folks. Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Derek.
Okay, going back on the, uh, agenda here, COVID-19 update. We're in the red.
Everybody's.
Totally in the red.
Does he have anything to say?
Oh, not really. I mean, we've got the, uh, as of Sunday, we had 57 additional cases over the four days. So we know we're in red. We're going to continue in there. We, we know exactly what, uh, you know, Governor Baker started putting out some new, some new guidelines and such. So it's, uh, you know, I mean, the, we know the statewide rollback to phase three step one is this Sunday, outdoor gatherings at event venues and public spaces, limited 50. The outdoor theaters, we really don't have anything. Close indoor theaters, reducing capacity from 50%, 40%, several sectors. The percentages are what, you know, just says, when you think about as the business owner, when you start doing 50 versus 40, it's, it's really one of the most brutal parts about this has been the constant changes in guidelines. And it's, uh, one week we're, we're going through and, uh, telling our employees and taking, uh, taking one measure, if you've been a, uh, if you've been a close contact and it changes, changes almost weekly. So it's, uh, I mean, you know, I, I don't know what you, you want. We're, we're probably, um, we're in the same boat as everyone else. It's a nightmare. And let me tell you something, if we did not have Doreen, uh, we, we would be, we would essentially be shut down. She's been amazing throughout this whole thing. So, uh, you know, she's just been on top of it. So we're, we're very, I personally am very lucky to have her. So I think that's my update, guys. We're, we're in the red. It's not getting better anytime soon. Let's get those vaccines cranking.
Yeah, get those vaccines cranking and please be smart over Christmas. You know, don't commingle different households. This is what is driving the virus up right now is the aftermath of Thanksgiving. You know, the CDC warned people, you know, just have Thanksgiving with your family unit. A lot of us didn't listen, went, went over to, you know, grandma's house or auntie's house or whatever. And that's exactly how the virus spreads. You know, your, your family is no less of an enemy to you than, uh, somebody on the street coughing and sneezing, lurching towards you at this point. Uh, they can get you sick as well because you don't know when you have it. Uh, so it's, you know, it's tough during the holiday season when people want to come together, but please stay apart so you can do it next year and be safe. Patrick?
Can I say one thing? All right, so I, I listened to some people out there. And unfortunately, because of the federal, um, election we just went through and they politicized the hell out of COVID. Um, and they scared everybody about the vaccine and, oh, you know, it was like Trump was looking in the microscope saying, all right, let's put some stuff in here. Let's add this. You know, instead of, uh, the scientists doing their job and just giving them money and the resources to do it. You know what I'm saying? It's like they were all kind of crazy. So there's people out there saying, well, I'm not taking the vaccine. I'm afraid of the vaccine. I'm afraid. Well, there, so far, I guess between the two vaccines, they've got 120,000 people take this vaccine. And they've had no problems, as I understand it. Uh, if everybody wants to watch on the 10th, the FDA is having their meeting and you can go on Zoom and you can watch it and you can see they'll get all the information. The companies will be there to make their peace and, and hopefully at some point that, that me, after that meeting or during that meeting, they're going to vote to release the vaccines. The problem is, is that people have to take it. And, you know, I got to just point out one thing. Every year, who gets a, who gets a flu shot? Just raise your hand quick. Yeah, probably most of you, right? Okay. Well, the flu shot is made every single year. It's not the same one you got the year before. It's not the same one you got the year before that. It's completely put together, re-reconstituted, made into a new vaccine, new stuff's put into it and everybody jumps in line and takes it. Haven't had any testing when you get it. But you go and take it, right? Of course you do, because you know why? It's the right thing to do. It's going to keep you alive. So I just hope that people will use their common sense, listen to the information, pay attention, go online, read the documents if you have to. If you're one of those people that has to know everything about it, go check it out and make sure. And then take the damn vaccine. I know I'm going to be the first one in line. I'll tell you that. To get that vaccine. Because I want to, I don't want to have, keep going through this. And I hope everybody else doesn't want to keep going through this easier. Remember, the rule is that we got to get 70% vaccinated before we consider this thing kind of over. 70%, that's huge. So let's, let's, uh, let's charge it up, guys, and pay attention, listen, learn and take the damn vaccine. Okay, I'm done. Hey, my little soapbox.
Anybody else want the soapbox or are we moving on to the next one?
We should pass it around.
Yeah, we'll pass it around. All right. I guess not. Uh, vote to ratify a hiring here.
Um, I move that we ratify the hiring of Kevin Pitcher as a paramedic, Christopher Doucette is a paramedic and Alyssa Smith is a paramedic.
Second.
Yeah, motion to approve hiring by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any discussion?
Want to say that, um, I think this is a point to my, my discussion earlier and how often we have to replace our people over in EMS. It's a revolving door. And, um, somehow we should try to come up with a solution. Um, in order to keep them longer. um, in order to keep them longer and, and not be a training agency for them to, you know, come here and spend a, a period of time and move on. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Uh, okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. We did the update from the Police Building Study Committee. Update from Town Council regarding Starlight Motel resident relocation.
Yes.
I understand council has had some conversations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, as uh, we all will recall, but for new viewers, uh, the Board of Selectmen expressed grave concern about the health and welfare of the persons residing at the Starlight Motel. Uh, and uh, I know Selectman Tropiano uh, expressed particular concern that these people be well cared for. Uh, following on in the spirit of the board's uh, direction, I contacted the Developers Council to find out what the situation was with respect to the tenants. Um, and so uh, we exchanged some polite correspondence about what was happening with uh, those folks. And uh, Developers Council has informed me that perhaps this, that they do not yet have title to the Starlight Motel and that perhaps the owner of the Starlight Motel, which at this point is not them, jumped the gun. Uh, and that they would be addressing the situation with the owner of the Starlight. Subsequently, uh, I got another communication from council for the developer who informed me that uh, not only had they contacted uh, the motel owner to make sure that the tenants would be well cared for, but that they were going to seek a modification of the project timing to delay the demolition of the Starlight Motel in terms of the overall project development. And that that would certainly assist in any uh, seasonal difficulties that the residents had. And in fact, I believe on Monday, the uh, developer filed an application to restructure the timing of the project so that the Starlight demolition would be put off for some months. So, uh, that's it in a nutshell. I believe your concerns were heard. And uh, of course, you know, they filed an application with uh, Mr. Buckland and we will follow the progress of that carefully and I'd certainly encourage, you know, any of the members of the Wareham Faith Community, who I know had expressed uh, concern about this to you. Uh, the members of the faith community certainly could follow along at the uh, ZBA level and with Mr. Buckland to see how that is coming on. So, that's.
Very good. Thank, thank you very much, Rich, for doing that. Um, I appreciate it. I felt really bad with what was going on down there. The thing that bothered me the most was that, as you well know, you can only stay twenty days in a hotel room uh, in town. And the Board of Health in hearing that they were going to rehome them and so on, allowed them to sort of violate the regulation because that was gonna happen. Remember, the regulation came in sort of during that whole process. So, they allowed them to stay there and this is the right thing for them to do. Is to take care of those people, make sure they're taken care of uh, their, their community residents, no matter what. And uh, and they're also people of minor mean, you know, minimum means and need to be taken care. Thank you very much.
Well, uh, thank you uh, Selectman Tropiano and, and with your permission, Mr. Chairman, you know, I think the public got a good display of how seriously the board takes uh, these things and, and your genuine expressions of human and humane concern for the fate of our least fortunate residents in town. So, uh, hopefully this will go along smoothly and, and uh, the residents will have a good holiday. That's our hope, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, discussion regarding marijuana taxation and fees.
Alan wanted to say something.
Oh, did you wanna speak to the, the Starlight issue?
And no, just a quick thing. The, the reason that, that it's working out for us is they decided they wanna change the sewer hookup. You know, for the project there. So, that's what's given us the timeframe. They're going before, I think it's conservation of water pollution control.
Sewer.
Sewer in order to change the hookup. So, it's a two-way street, but thankfully that came up, which makes it easy enough to make that decision. Okay, try ahead, Peter.
Yep, okay. Uh, let's see, discussion regarding marijuana taxation and fees. So, what is this Cannabis Control Commission doing to us? What do, what options do we have to try to protect the, the retail uh, traffic that we have? And you know, what's, what's the overall approach here that I think we're gonna have to settle on to try to push for, to protect this industry that, you know, we bought into pretty strongly in this town?
Oh. Okay, had a discussion late this afternoon with the, the Executive Director of uh, governmental legislation for the Cannabis Control Commission. And uh, actually, I think the conversation was about five o'clock this afternoon. And what's going to happen, it looks like, is that we will be required to, and they will, to have another host agreement. If they're a manufacturer uh, that already exists or someone who's coming in, there has to be a separate host agreement besides the manufacturing agreement uh, covering the uh, basically the delivery of product to the retail customer. In which uh, as of today, the DOR hasn't given us a hundred percent okay yet. That the host agreement going for the second phase would be the actual price to the customer, which would include the delivery and the actual retail price of the product. So, therefore, we, as of right now, should be able to negotiate a host agreement at three percent that we do now, the actual total sale, including delivery, plus a three percent impact fee. I still have concerns how much it's gonna affect our existing retail stores as they come online, because I think only one is online so far. Uh, this is also designed to help uh, what they call the economically handicapped as far as coming into this industry. They're trying to open it up to uh, lowering, people with lower income abilities to get into the industry itself. But as of today, that's where it stands. I'll have an answer from uh, DOR through the Cannabis Control Commission, hopefully early next week is to make sure that we can do what I just said. Any questions?
Uh, anybody got any questions for Alan?
No, not for Alan.
Okay.
Uh, I do have a statement about um, the taxation, the impact fee. I've, I've said this two or three times now. It's as uh, it's as much up to us as a town to contact our Senator and Legislature and to have the um, impact fee, you know, request that they, they put it on their um, calendar and agendas and, and turn the impact fee, let's, let's, let's make it part of the tax and not the impact fee. It's great that the municipal um, Mass Municipal Association's gonna address it, but we need to address that as individual towns. Um, and, and talk to our legislators and get them on board with it. And uh, if we don't do it, you know, and if it passes us by, shame on us. Thank you.
I, 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 I am concerned about the overall structure.
Alan? I would agree with Jim. I'd agree with Jim on this completely because I've already reached out and actually asked MMA as one of the Board of Director members to actually start to, you know, fight on this particular piece and going to at least a five percent overall or six percent tax. But I would like to see this board, uh, as a board, you know, through the chair, write a letter to our state rep, our uh, state senator, maybe a couple of the reps and state senators that are around that area. Not just the ones that represent us, you know, lobbying for this. And we can probably get, I would say, four or five towns that are in the same situation to write the same kind of letters. But we need to be proactive in this because sooner or later that impact fee's gonna go away.
Even, you know, it, it, there's even the, the, the difficulty and, and the potential for fighting over how you justify the impact fee. So, you, you know, it's, it's just put it this way, that, that was a smart move by the, the, the industry. Uh, probably not such a smart move by us in voting to adopt it.
I know.
What was put forward in twenty sixteen with that stipulation in there, but uh, yeah, I have no problem reaching out, but I, but you know, if somebody wants to make a motion.
So may.
Thank you. All right, Patrick, good.
Okay, motion to uh, authorize correspondence to our Senator and Representative by Alan and, and others in the State Legislature, uh, seconded by Patrick. Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, I'll get cracking on that.
Thank you.
Town meeting articles. We're gonna have to scroll down and see if we do need any more votes.
I don't think so.
I thought we took care of them last week.
I think they're.
I thought we did too.
I'm pretty sure they're all set, Peter.
Yep.
On there. I'd have to look back at last week's.
Okay. That's fine. Uh, any other town business not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to the posting of the meeting? Alan?
No.
Patrick?
No.
Jim?
No.
Judy?
No.
Myself, no. Uh, town, just one observation, uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna post a meeting uh, before the town meeting that takes place on the twelfth. Uh, I was, I don't think we're gonna have a lot to take up. I was gonna do it for eleven thirty, but we can do it earlier if somebody, you know, thinks we should do it earlier.
You gonna buy breakfast?
I like that. There you go.
The moderator said she took care of that. That's what, that's what took, took us so long to settle on a place. You needed a place with a kitchen so they can bring it out to us.
Feeding the troops.
There you go. So, anyway, uh, Town Administrators Report, Derek?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think uh, we, we've made some uh, strides on the transfer station. So, I think we'll try and put together a uh, PowerPoint for, for next week, but just so that everybody understands, uh, the, the transfer station is being set up as a pay-as-you-throw program. What that means is there's a sticker cost. That sticker cost is associated with the whole operation of the transfer station. In other words, all the costs of that uh, facility. Now, the one thing um, we're not doing actually is charging back for a lot of the, for the work that's done on behalf of the transfer station by the town. Cause it's just set up as a revolving account. So, in other words, all the work being done by uh, municipal maintenance. There'll be two designated employees there. They're paid from the revolving fund, but for instance, all the work that Mr. Menard does or they, you know, the work they've been doing out there, the treasure collectors office, everybody. So, um, you know, it's a bit, the, the sticker is a bit of a subsidized rate, even though people won't want to uh, hear that. So, the transfer station sticker, and just to go back, um, I think we would be the hundred and fifty-fourth community to adopt a pay-as-you-throw program. So, there, there's examples in our area, right next door in Plymouth and, and other communities. Um, we're looking at a sticker price of about a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, we've pretty much set it at a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, that's for the whole, that's gonna cover you for the operation. Then the next part is, you know, the um, the, the user is required to pay a per-unit fee for disposal of household trash. So, what that means is you have to purchase a pre-printed uh, trash bag, which we call the town trash bag. And that reflects the cost to dispose the solid waste. Also, there's no direct charge for recycling. So, um, you, when you understand you're gonna buy these bags and once you throw those out, you're getting rid of your recycling. The cost is for those bags, the recycling have no direct cost. This is uh, set up as a way to incentivize recycling. Even though it's more expensive, it is better overall. Um, the bags are purchased. So, this is the interesting thing. Bags are purchased at places like uh, supermarkets, so Stop &amp; Shop, Shaw's. Um, some, maybe some of those smaller grocery stores, hardware stores, pharmacies such as CVS and Walgreens. There's no tax on those bags. So, you're not getting an extra tax. There's no mass sales tax. So, you're gonna have two types of bags. A small bag, which is basically your household kitchen bag, which is a twelve to fifteen gallon bag. They'll hold about fifteen pounds of trash. And again, the size fits most kitchen trash containers. Uh, small bags cost a dollar twenty-five each. We had, uh, we finalized that number today. It had been in the two-dollar range. And working with the representative from Mass DEP, we were able to bring it down to a dollar twenty-five per bag. So, when you buy those, they're sold as rolls in a box. And the small bags come ten to a box. So, the box will be twelve dollars and fifty cents. Then you have a larger bag, which is the thirty to thirty-three gallon bag. So, not quite the size of those giant contractor bags, but sort of somewhere, somewhere in between. Um, those bags hold about twenty-five pounds of waste. One of the things you'll notice with the bags we're using, the um, we've opted for the ones they call, that have a, have a certain pattern on them that don't rip as easy as the other bags. So, um, as somebody that's experienced with the flat bags in my own community that moved to this other pattern, these are much better. And uh, nothing's more frustrating than ripping one of these bags in half or something like that and then having to put, wrap another bag around it. They, they don't, they don't allow you to tape it all up and put it back together. They frown on that. So, um, the large bags, we had had them again beforehand at three dollars per bag, but after today's conversation and working through the numbers with DEP representative, it was uh, we are at two dollars a bag for the large bags, which are the thirty to thirty-three gallon. And they'll be sold in uh, in a box. Five come to a box. So, it's ten dollars per box. So, we're working with Waste Zero on these. They are starting to print them. We've ordered a approximately, so I think it's about uh, our first initial orders, almost eighty thousand bags between the two of them, just so everybody understands the. And they said, that'll get you about a uh, six to eight weeks. Just so you understand what, what goes into some of these programs. The transfer station's going to reopen January fifth. If you've been out there, you've seen that, you start to see some changes. Uh, we're going to change how the flow goes in also, so that the capacity inside the transfer station can hold more of the cars. So, you don't have as much traffic being blocked out on the, on Route twenty-eight. And also change where the recycling is and the trash. Right now, you have recycling and trash people crisscrossing and it creates a dangerous, dangerous environment. So, you're going to be required to go all the way in and you'll see it because there's gonna be stanchions placed on, which you can go out to the recycling and around the loop and come back to trash. If you don't have any trash, there's a little separate route. I mean, any recycling, there's a little separate route for the uh, for the trash. This is meant to make it safer. This is gonna be a big change for folks and we understand it. But this whole system is set up to pay for itself outside of those other things that we've talked about. So, we understand this will be a big change. January fifth, which is a Tuesday, is when we will reopen. So, um, this is gonna be, the, the station's gonna be used highly, especially in the beginning. So, you know, try not to go with peak times. And I understand without us being allowed to open on Sundays, that Saturday is the most peak time. We're trying to get a uh, I don't know if it'll be done in time, but we're looking to get cameras set up so people can actually go to the, go and check on a webcast and see how long the lines are. And you can choose if it's, if you have an alternate day, you can go, you can choose not to go that day. Um, this is a very large undertaking and has basically created a whole new program within the last couple of months. So, uh, I appreciate everybody's patience. Again, we're trying to put a PowerPoint that we can put out there that people can. that people can look at the, on the website. This isn't something that we created out of blue. It works, it's effective, it's been in other communities. We know there's going to be a large sticker shock for folks. I've been asked about the senior discount for stickers, but the senior discount really comes in where if you're, if you're a smaller household or a senior or a single person, you're using less trash bags, which is where you get your discount. So right now, we're trying to keep this as simple as possible, get the operation up and running, and then make adjustments. It will be just for solid waste and recycling. No bulky items, no metal. We're going to give alternative sites, just such as New Bedford, Waste and Recycling, and give you alternate locations.
No, we can't have this. No good view.
Patrick, I don't know who you're feeding, but we can hear you.
My dog, sorry.
I was hoping it was the dog.
He just came sneaking up on.
Go ahead.
Mr. Sullivan, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. You have addressed the individuals who like to go to the dump.
Yes.
Me. What about people who choose to stay with curbside? Because I think that the other half of what needs to be said, needs to be said.
Yeah. Curbside, we've been working with the contractor. They're estimating to be up and running, which was the contract date of April 1. What that means is anybody that's on curbside, they're just going with their current supplier in the meantime. So April, and then April 1, the up and running with ABC is the one that looks like we're going to be working with.
Okay, so if you currently have Joe Smith, you can stay with Joe Smith at whatever price you're paying Joe Smith until that drop-dead date.
Right, whatever price that is, is between you and Joe Smith.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear to the people who have been asking me a whole lot of questions, and I don't know the answers, but now I do. Thank you.
Yeah, there's going to be some, I really think, once people look at this, there's some that are going to need, required to buy the pay-as-you-throw sticker in the beginning, but will want to go to curbside. And as there's, there's this variance between January 1 and April 1, which I understand is April Fool's Day. So we're giving some people some Easy Cannon fodder there. You know, but the variance. I think what, anybody that buys the Wareham Transfer Station sticker then would like to go to curbside, I think we credit them that $1.25 towards the sticker. Because I think people need to understand, when you go, if you choose curbside, curbside comes with allowing you access. You'll have to get the sticker, but it allows you access to the transfer station. So curbside is basically the dual option for you. You will have the ability, you'll have curbside, and then you'll have the ability to go to a transfer station. You do not need to buy these bags or curbside. That's the number one thing people should know, too. I know it's a little confusing. The bags are only for the transfer station. The curbside folks, you'll have your bin. Whatever you can shove in that bin, that's what gets thrown out. You don't need bags, you don't need, you don't need to buy any bags or anything like that for your own home. I would, I would definitely put trash bags, you just don't need the town ones. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
So, any questions?
No, just, it's been a lot of work, and I want to thank Derek and Dave and everybody for the efforts and time, and it's not easy, it wasn't easy. Lot of, lot of things to work through. On the cost of the curbside in relation to if you've bought the transfer station sticker, that will be a credit, not that we may, it will be a credit, if I'm correct, towards your curbside if you buy the sticker upfront, correct, Mr. Sullivan? Or?
Right, if you buy the sticker upfront and then you choose to go curbside, and I think we will have to give a timeframe for that. It can't be, you know, it.
Right.
Yeah, I think you give it like a 30-day grace period. The other thing, and I think this is coming back, I want people to understand, and thank you, Selectmen Minis, you're, sorry, you're triggering the old noggin. The sticker that you're going to buy for the transfer station, you're going to have two options. The best one will be to actually go to an online portal, and you'll be able to buy it there, and they will ship it to your home. The sticker, this has been set up in other communities, it works well. We will still be selling them at the Harbor Masters office. But so that we don't inundate people and cause them a lot of alarm, your 2020 transfer station sticker, another one, where it's the one that you have right now, that will be good until February 1st. February, after February, February 1st, and then after, you will need the new one. So we're giving that first, the first month of January, so people are not panicked running in the first week or two. We know there's several thousand folks that will be involved with this. So we're trying to make it as easy as possible. We're also, those bags should be in the stores by December 21st. So we're also working with the supplier to see if we can have, basically, host a one-day outdoor sale for people to come. It's just those aren't the best because it's a lot of cash, and we don't like handling cash outside, if you will, so. So, yeah, I appreciate all the Selectmen Minis' support. You know, we really, we, myself especially, but the town as a whole is very lucky to have someone like Dave Menard and his staff involved in this. His thoughtfulness and his ability to get things done are second to none. So it is fantastic.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone on that? We're good? Do you have anything else in your report?
No, sir.
No, that was actually a good one. Liaison Initiative Reports. Start with Alan.
Just a couple of things. We had last week the joint meeting of the School Committee, Finance Committee, and Board of Selectmen. As everybody knows, it's been in the papers, et cetera. They were looking at 9% increase. They've adjusted to 6 and a fraction. The only comment I made during the meeting was, it's nice to ask for 6%, but if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. And they're going to have to figure out, with Derek and stuff working back and forth, how to make this work. I believe Derek is giving them about $500,000 out of our, I think, stabilization funds or whatever, actually free cash, I'm sorry, most likely, to help them out. But there's going to have to be some tightening of the belts, especially when the budget of 2022 comes up, and we are expecting decreases in funding, no matter what anyone else says. The Planning Board yesterday did vote two in favor and three against the, you know, the zoning bylaw that was brought forward. There may be another vote coming down, some reconsideration, I don't know. But it was an interesting meeting. Again, there was a lot of back and forth and a lot of issues, and we'll see how this goes. Today, of course, the governor did announce, you know, Phase 3, Step 1, which is going back. I sent everybody a copy, what covers everything involved with this. I'm not going to do any details on it because it's out to the public. And I think that between the news agencies and basically everything else, the details are pretty straightforward. We're just going to have to deal with it. And it's the first time I can say that I've seen the governor actually get a little testy because he's been under a lot of pressure on the economic side to not do anything. And I think it took a lot of courage at his part to make that hard decision, which was basically, are we concerned about the safety of people? Or are we concerned about the overall stability of businesses? And that's, it's a no-win, no matter which way you decide. But he's basically stayed fast, and he's concerned about all of us as far as our health. I can't say anything else, but I thought that was a pretty difficult decision to make. And I know he didn't want to make this at all, but that's where we're at because we just haven't followed the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
No, I'm okay today. We had my committee in here, that's enough.
There you go. Jim?
We had an affordable housing trust meeting today and, you know, discussed some of the things and zoning articles and disappointments that nothing on affordability and our inclusionary are in them. And that is both for the Wareham Village article and the upcoming article for the Recreation District related to multiple-family housing and whatnot. This is to, this is to address the issue of ongoing growth and not trying to address a backlog of the percentage of what we need to achieve. It's to try to stay constant to what gets developed now, or current with it. And I think it's a proper time to try to institute zoning change and incorporate it into zoning change, that being the affordable and inclusionary portion. And it's disappointing that we can't get the support and traction to move this forward. We had discussion on that. Another 40 B's talking about, we'll be going in front of the zoning Board of Appeals soon. And as for 20 duplexes off of Rosebrook Road called Settlers Glen, they were in the, at our meeting today for presentation. We had inadvertently been left off a meeting they had had previous. So we had some discussion about that, some good discussion. Alan went over last night's meeting with the Planning Board. I think it was 3, 4, and 2 against Alan. Am I correct?
No, it was 2, 2, 4, and 3 against.
Okay, well, whichever it was, it was good conversation, a lot of good points brought up. And we'll see how it goes. That's about it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Judy?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, I'm all set as well. Let's see, we have a set of minutes?
Yes, I moved that we approved the November 10th, 2020 minutes as submitted.
Second.
And we were all here, correct, Almundo?
Yep.
Okay. Motion by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Uh, yeah.
Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yep.
Myself, yes. Every so often, I'm going to flip the order to see who's awake. Well, I guess it's, I guess it's time for Alan to steal the show here, or at least steal it off the air.
Motion to adjourn, please, everybody be safe. Thank you.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Alan, seconded by Judy. Alan, well, no, I can't, roll call again. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, good night, Wareham, be safe. We will meet again at 11:30 on Saturday.
Oh, gee.
Rich?
Uh, Rich? Oh, Rich is waving goodbye.